Please. Thank you, Krista. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the joint study session with our Human Services Commission. This city council special meeting is being held telephonically and virtually in compliance with state executive and legislative actions responding to the COVID-19 emergency. And this study session is an informal meeting involving discussion between and among the city council commissioners and city staff regarding policy issues. We may have some presentations, but no decisions are made during this study session. With that, I'll call the study session to order. And let's just introduce ourselves for Krista, and we'll start with, I'll just call off members. So Dawn.
You're on mute, Dawn.
I'm Dawn Allen. I'm the vice chair for the Human Service Commission.
Thank you, Dawn. Sarah Parker. We can't hear you, Sarah.
Well, Sarah's figuring out her audio. I got an email from Catherine that says she's here. So I don't know if you see her, Krista.
I do have someone in the audience. It's named Forty-seventh District Democrats.
That's her.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, while we're waiting for Sarah, let's go to Jessica.
Hi, I'm Jessica Fernkirkland, Commissioner for the Human Services Commission.
Thank you, Jessica. And Catherine?
Hey, thank you so much. Sorry, I was unable to rename myself until I was moved as a panelist. I'm Catherine Williams, Human Services Commission. It's nice to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Who am I missing from Human Services? Okay, I see you, Sarah. We just can't hear you.
Tried a different audio settings. That one working?
Yes, it is. Welcome, Sarah.
I'm Sarah. I'm a Human Services Commission member.
Thank you. Then we'll go to Jennifer.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Harja-Halzen. I'm a council member. Thrilled to be with you all here this evening.
Thank you, Jennifer. Christina?
Guys, Christina Saltis here, council member. Excited to hear what you've got.
Thank you, Christina. Beth?
Beth Porter, council member. Looking forward to the conversation.
Jared?
Jared Koppel, council member.
Joe?
Joseph Simomo, council member. Thanks for being here, everyone.
Dawn?
Hi, this is Sean Smith. I'm on the council as well.
Thank you, Sean. Julie?
Julie Johnston, city staff. Glad to be here.
Thank you. Krista?
Krista Bates, Executive Assistant and Deputy City Clerk.
And our city manager, Regan.
Good evening, everyone. Regan Bowley, Covington City Manager.
Mayor.
Yes, I'm missing someone. I can't remember who's on the phone.
We have Lydia, and if she'd like to speak, she would dial star six to unmute.
Evening, Lydia. If you could introduce yourself, just hit star six.
Yes, hi. Good evening, everybody. Lydia Fiesli with Human Service Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Did I miss anybody? All right. Well, thank you all for being here tonight. It's great to see everybody. And with that, I will turn it over to Dawn to start the discussion with Human Services. On my agenda, I show summary of 2021 and goals for 2022, but I will let you run it however you wish, Dawn. Welcome.
Great. Thank you so much for having us. And I know that we're all happy to be here and share with you the work that we've done over the last year. We have some. Well, let me just start with one exciting thing is we have a new commissioner, and that's Jessica Kirkland. She introduced herself to you, but we just wanted to also add that she's just been a wealth of information around housing, but also just the commitment she has to this community. And she came on to this commission just fully engaged from the beginning, asking questions, offering insights, and we're just really thankful to have her. I wanted you to welcome her here. And then, as has kind of become our norm, we like to during the year invite some of the different service providers that we help to fund and to let us know how they're doing, give us some updates and to allow us to ask some questions that, you know, that we have had over the year. And so I have a list here of four that we met with. All of our meetings have also been by Zoom, so they were electronic, but we had One Love come, and One Love is a new agency that we have funded for the first time, and they are centered around helping young people develop healthy relationships, very interactive. It's a new way of learning and gathering wisdom for our youth. So we were really excited to work with them and we were, I, for one, was really blown away by their presentation, and if we have time later, we can get some more feedback from the rest of the commission on that as well. We also met with the YMCA, the Nexus House, which is a housing program for teens. And they talked with us about the need in the community still and the way that they provide services for young people. We also had a really interesting presentation from Washington Poison Control. And I don't know about the rest of the commission, but one of the things that really stuck out for me from that meeting was that our young girls are really at risk, more so that we've had way more self-harm and suicide attempts in the eleven to fourteen age group. And I don't, I'm not going to pull the exact number out for you, but I think it was nearly eight times as much of increase as for other young people, that age group are just very much at risk. And, and then the fourth agency that we had was Dawn Domestic Abuse Women's Network, and they came and shared with us the work that they're doing. Another thing that we did this last year is we connected with Sergeant Rog Roberts, I'm sorry, who, as you know, is now Chief Roberts. And we had her come in and talk with us about what law enforcement is seeing in our community. You know, what, what's happening? What are the needs? What's going on? And our goal as a commission is always, excuse me, to be responsive to what the needs are to in our community, not just what we believe the needs are, but we need to be gathering that information and be nimble with the way we address that. Always looking for an opportunity to use the word nimble. So that's done. We'll check that off. While talking with Chief Roberts, we heard a lot about, a lot of times it's the same families that are, that are calling for help. And we have this similar families and citizens that are calling for help, but we don't know if they're getting that help. And apparently oftentimes they're not because they're calling with very similar issues over and over again. And we don't know if they're getting access to their resources, they're given information, but are they able to, you know, to, to access that? Do they have the means and the support to do that? And that information that we received was one of the reasons that we proposed the Community Care Navigator positions for the House Bill fifteen ninety funds. I think that's one of the things that we're most excited about as a commission is that to see that need in real life and to have, you know, the council ask us what our opinions were, like what our recommendations would be on this money. And I just really appreciate that you included us in the conversation. And I'm very excited about that position. Another thing that we did this year a little differently because of COVID, we wanted to be as responsive to what the needs were, but also with the information that we already have. And so we took a look at our master plan and the areas that we have committed to providing services or access for our citizens. And then we looked through all the different grant applications and who we fund. Wanted to make sure that there's a balance of that. Do we have a balance of education for all ages? Do we have a balance? And to take a look at that so that we were making decisions or recommendations with our head, not just our hearts, because this is work that if you don't have your heart in it, then we really ought not to be here doing it. But we wanted to make sure that we had a balance and that we were giving that information. We were able to host a, host a booth at the Storehouse Resource Fair. That was in August. And so we represented the city of Covington, but we were able to connect with some of the different resource providers in the area, but also represent to the citizens of Covington that city of Covington cares about people. And we were able to give out, give away some giveaways and to just talk with people and to get an idea you know, what their thoughts were, or just to be in, just to be engaged. And we participated in the parks development, parks plan development. I'm reading this, but we contributed to the pros plan, and really that was a lot of learning for us and just talking about what we know from within the community, what some of the needs are and what that might look like. And then we also directed staff funding to a human services agency. And I wanted to stop there and give you an opportunity to ask the commission any questions you might have about those accomplishments for this year.
Does anybody have any questions for Dawn or anybody on the Human Services? I don't see anybody raising their hand, but that's quite a list of accomplishments that you were all able to achieve. So thank you all so much for that. I see Debbie has joined us, but go ahead, Dawn.
And I actually, Debbie, if you'd like, I can pass this over to Debbie for the second part where we're, I'm talking about what we're looking forward to for this next year, if you're settled, Debbie, and you're able to take over.
Thank you very much for covering, Dawn. I really appreciate that. The accident on eighteen is bad both directions. Unfortunately, it's backed up for miles due to a fatality, wrong way driver. So for twenty twenty-two, we have more optimism than we had last year about the potential of being able to do more of what we've done in the past and engage in the community. It's a big year for us because we have to review the funding applications, which takes a great deal of our time through the year, but we'll be working on those allocations. We're going to also continue working on our relationships with the agencies that we have funded to date. It's been really beneficial for us to have One Love, YMCA, Dawn come and speak with us because it allows us to understand how we can utilize our individual resources and knowledge to help support them and help connect them with other agencies, which is really an important factor. So we want to continue that, those relationships, expanding on them and finding ways that we can connect them to support one another and support the community. We'd like to one outreach event. You know, we'll need to really see how the year goes with COVID and social distancing, but our goal would be to do something great like we've done in the past for Polaris. A couple of events, they've been incredibly successful and helpful for that community. Doesn't necessarily have to be there, but something of that nature. We could have somebody like One Love come and speak and do a whole presentation on healthy relationships. They have very tailored messages for their audiences, which could really be great for any family, community, or, or program. And also just bring, we could just bring our community partners in like we did with Polaris two years ago and have them bring their resources and invite the community to come in and learn about them. So those are our goals for twenty twenty-two. Hopefully, it'll be more of a normal year. We're very interested and very excited to be able to actually meet in person again. We have two commissioners that have never even met the commission in person before. Sarah came on with us last year, a little over a year ago now. And then, then we have Jessica, who just joined us this year as well, and neither one of us have done it. I would just say before I open it up to other questions and then comments from the commissioners is just, I bragged about them before, but I truly cannot tell you how inspirational and extraordinary each individual person is on this commission. We're very close-knit, and when somebody gets tired and has a lot going on in life and they think they just can't do it, we're like, stick with us. And we're always so glad when we come to a meeting and get a chance to work together and be inspired. They're amazing. I'd like to, are there any questions about the year's goals that we have set up for the council?
Council have any questions for Debbie or any of the commissioners? Well, I want to say that I am looking forward to seeing all of your, because when you, when you set goals for Human Services, you usually succeed very well. So I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing the recaps and, but actually being able to hopefully participate in some of those events this year. So I'm, I'm just very appreciative of all the hard work that each of you do on the Human Services, because I mean, sitting there reading through all those grants and and all the requests and having to make the hard decisions of what to supply or be able to fund any of these organizations is got to be a very hard and grueling process. But I'll be quiet. Is there any, any commissioners that want to add anything?
I would like to invite anybody to comment about how you feel about the new community person that we're going to come, come on to support the police department that was just approved. Dawn, one of the commissioners?
I'll comment. I'm thrilled. I think it's going to be just such a huge benefit for the city to have this type of connection between services and support and I'm excited to see where it transitions and appreciate the support. And this was just something that meant so much to each one of us and you especially hearing at the time Sergeant Roberts speak about how beneficial and influential that would be, as well as other members of the community that we invited in and had some deep conversations with about how best to support the community. I mean, this just kept coming up as a need. And I think it's going to be an asset to the community and just appreciative for the belief in, in our vision there. So I couldn't be more happy.
Thank you, Jessica. Anybody else?
You know, I know I spoke earlier and said how much I am excited about that, but I just wanted to also add that I'm really proud to be part of a city that puts this kind of a priority for its citizens. So I just wanted to thank you for, thank you for taking that recommendation and moving forward with it. We're a smaller city and just, I am just really proud that this is something that is important to us as a city. So thank you.
Yeah, and in terms of when we first were, were asked to advise on, on this issue, we were just sort of, there are so many options that are useful and good. And then we went back to the surveys of what the needs were, discussions with the police, and just as we were trying to narrow it down, this, this one kept on ticking every single button of needs that kept on coming up in terms of proactively looking forward to the growth of our city. And it just, it really made sense, and it just felt like this is the thing to do when we have such an amazing opportunity. And thank you for your trust and, and our advice.
Lydia or Catherine?
I don't, hello, I don't think I can add too much to that. I am also very grateful to be able to extend the service to the the people of Covington. When I first joined the commission, one thing I really wanted to do is get services inside the city for our, the people who live here. So I also thank council for giving us the trust in us to do this. It's super exciting. And also I'm just excited that we're going to be able to collaborate with our other sister cities and increase the availability of services everywhere and also some of the people of Covington. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Catherine. Krista, I see Lydia rejoined in the audience as an attendee.
Thank you. She's been moved over now.
Thank you.
There she is.
Welcome back, Lydia. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I'm just excited to be here and really unpack with all of you about what we've been doing in the, in, in the past year, well, in the current year. So I'm excited for this new position. I echo all the sentiments that, that are my fellow commissioners mentioned, and I'm excited to create a space where communities can, our community can thrive, but also this balance of wellness in our city and health and safety. So thank you.
Thank you. Does any of the council members have anything they'd like to say or add?
Can I just jump in?
Yeah.
Thanks. I just, I, I am one of the newer council members. I still consider myself new because I only got the days for like, you know, a couple months before we kicked off, but I, it's, it's always a pleasure. I feel like, you know, not only do we, you mentioned that, you know, we take your advice, but I personally value your advice and this is your territory amongst, you know, us as well, but it's a real joy coming together, however often we can, and collaborating and just doing good work together. So I'm also honored and thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Christina. Sean?
Yeah, and I appreciate everything the Human Services Commission is doing as well and as well as all the good and deep thinking you're, you're doing on identifying those needs in our community. And when this community outreach person came before us, you know, it was, it, it's that type of thinking that, that we need to basically identify those, those needs in the community. So we really did appreciate, excuse me, just the approach that you, you, you were proposing. And so it made it easy for us to, to basically approve that. So I, I think it's going to be something that's going to help target spender money wisely, but also get the resources and, and the services to people that, that really need them. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Sean. Beth?
Yeah, I just, again, super impressed with all of the hard work that you all are doing. And I, for me, knowing that you're in that for all of the right reasons, your hearts are in the right place and the strength that you have to have to make some of these decisions. I mean, it can't be easy. If we had all the money in the world, it wouldn't be a problem, and we don't. So having to make those tough decisions, but just super impressed with how well you're connected with the community, with taking those, those steps to find out exactly what is the root cause of the problem and trying to figure out solutions to solve, to solve them and, and the way you collaborate with your the organizations in the community. I think it's just fantastic. You guys are doing a great job.
Thanks, Beth. Anybody else? Jennifer?
Yes, hi. So you guys mentioned the Community Care Navigator, working with sister cities, and I was curious what that looks like from your perspective. And also if there are other cities with a similar position and what that looks like. Regan and Chief Roberts did let us know it would be a licensed medical professional or a mental health professional. And so I was just curious what, what you all see their day-to-day looking like as well, those three things.
I'll start by saying that there is a job description, I believe, for this role. But it is definitely a combination of hands-on and, you know, active in the community and then follow-up within an office space as well. This person's going to be really critical in helping make connections with other organizations, agencies, and support people that they run into within their work out in the community as the liaison between the police, the hospitals, and the, the patients themselves, or the people in crises. And that's generally, right now, the most you're going to be able to get out of somebody that, it's a, it's a taxing role. And there's a, I only say this because of the nature of my own work in Tacoma. I've seen a lot of this type of work, and it's very exhausting and it's very demanding. You find, once you get them on board, you find that you needed them a lot more than you realized and that they start, you start hearing these stories about, that just want to bring you to tears of the things that they've been able to do and connect people that have been suffering and struggling that nobody could reach, and these people are able to do that by being out in the field. But then it's the follow-up work that they do when they get back to the office that's going to be able to help connect them to the right people and build those relationships and write the reports and do all the things that they, they need to do internally. Eventually, the goal would definitely be they're probably going to need a support staff. In every program I've ever built, this is how we start, and then the wheels start spinning faster than any of us, you know, could dream of because the needs are so great. And it's not too difficult to justify expanding support.
If I could add on to that, too, as we've talked about this after the budget workshop, where the council authorized this position. I have reached out to some other cities, and Jennifer, you, you asked about other cities. And some other cities that are doing this same type of position are looking to contract the position. So they'll put an RFQ out and request for qualifications, and that might be a really good way for us to go. And becomes a little easier to scale up as well, like Debbie was just mentioning. So that's, that's one option we'll pursue either in-house or contracting for that position.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just, I'm curious with nothing, you know, existing at this point. And like you were just saying, writing reports. Well, where are those reports going to go? Who's going to get those reports? It's, it's all very interesting. And I hope that for at least this person that they're independent and it's clear to them what to tackle and how to tack it, tackle it, and it's not overwhelming, and they have a clear thing that they're, you know, they're doing every day because it does have a lot of promise and a lot of potential. And it is a huge need in here. Access to mental and behavioral health is, in, in my opinion, the number one issue in Covington. I mean, you know, you're, the survey that you all put out last year said that as well. And I, I'm just thinking about success and really effectiveness of, of this position and how, how we can support and ensure that and how you know, how are we going to be doing temperature checks on this person and their progress and, and, and the impact to, to the community and the people being, you know, ultimately served and benefiting here. So lots and lots of questions. And so I know that that's not, you know, necessarily the commission's job. I'll be harassing Regan about that. But I just wanted to, to get my, you know, at least thoughts out there to you all. So yeah, so we can just ensure that this is the best, the best thing forward.
Thank you, Jennifer.
I can address, I can address that quickly if you'd like, Mayor.
Sure.
So if it's in-house, it wouldn't be any different than any other position in-house where their job functions and responsibilities would be evaluated per their performance, just like any other employee. And so I just emailed you, Jennifer, the job description. I can send it to the rest of the council if you'd like it.
Awesome.
But that, that would be the basis for the performance evaluation. That evaluation would be performed by Chief Roberts and myself. And that's how we preliminarily have it set up. If we do contracting, which we just started talking about a couple of days ago, it may be obviously a little different structure.
Right, thank you. And I assume there's no actual training since there's no one to, to train them. They would hopefully come in with experience and hit the ground running.
So, so that's, that's a good point. And that's, so it's the training and the liability if we're providing mental health services with this person where I feel like it might be a better route to contract. That's how the city of Kent is doing it as well for those two reasons. They don't have, have that training in-house and also liability. So so I've been talking to Julie about this, and she's sharing that with Noreen as well.
Awesome, thank you.
Julie and I spoke at length about this, and my advice was you don't need to recreate the wheel. There are other agencies that have done this successfully and learned from the, the pitfalls and the strengths of the programs. You evaluate those and find the one shoe that fits CHC the best. If I could give one piece of advice, it's such an autonomous role. It's, I always say it's not to just put a butt in the seat. You need to wait patiently and wait for that right person. And I have interviewed and hired many behavioral health people through the years, and You would think it'd be easier than it is. It is not. And this is a very specific role and. We have a very good idea of what we want and you get that right seasoned person. You don't bring in a kid right out of college or a graduate student. This is a seasoned veteran that knows how to work across the different demographics because. You do not know who might have crisis. I've had family crises myself in neighborhoods you wouldn't normally picture is needing this kind of support. It's going to be throughout the community. It's old people, seniors, excuse me, sorry. And it's children, it's people with long term mental health illnesses. You need somebody that's able to work that and has a proven history of it. And then I would have them shadow and meet with other. People that have successfully implemented in the other cities.
Thank you, Debbie. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Debbie or Julie, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I'm just super excited about, I can't even tell you how giddy. We were about this opportunity. We spent hours on it, hours and hours talking about it and working through it and bringing our different experience. To the table and talking about it and the strengths, the weaknesses. And but we were all so excited and emotional about just the opportunity. It affords this little city, you know, to have something we've never had. Before. It's pretty, pretty cool.
Great. Well, I am super excited as well. I'm just very impressed with the goals that you have set up for next year and. All the hard work and and to move forward. So. I really appreciate everything that each of you do for human services and. Taking care of all those in our community. So. Anything else, otherwise?
I just quickly wanted to add, since I am here with you all and this only happens for me usually once a year is. Is how much we appreciate Julie and the role she plays with the commission. She's really quiet this evening, but she is a. Just a really important part of the work that we do and she oftentimes makes it quite easy for us. She keeps us organized and she helps clarify the kinds of things. I'm not having my words come out as smoothly as I would like, but I greatly appreciate. Her in this role and I want to thank the city for for her.
Wow, well, I'm speechless. I mean, I've been quiet, but that that makes me even more speechless, I guess. Thank you, Dawn. I I don't really have anything to add. I I've just kind of been listening and. I'm just thinking about, you know, the next year and what what that's going to bring and. I just know with this group, we're going to make very sound decisions and great decisions with. The funding that we are given and. This group has been very good stewards of the city's dollars, the taxpayers' money and very conscious about making really good decisions and. I agree, this is a really powerful group of women and I'm definitely happy to be the. Facilitator and support person to this group, so.
I have to agree, Julie is a rock star, so I always appreciate everything and all the information she. Provides me as well. So thank you.
Oh, wow. Okay. Well, now I'm really turning red, so.
She does not accept accolades very well, I have to tell you.
Yeah, I don't, that doesn't, that kind of bounces off a little bit, yeah.
Which she gives them all the time.
Well, if there's no other comments or questions, then I guess our. Study session is over. Anybody else?
For having us.
Thank you for being here. It's always a wealth of information that each of you provide for human services. So. We really appreciate each of you and all the hard work you do. So thank you. And with with that, we are adjourned and we will start our council meeting at seven o'clock tonight. So thank you all very much for attending. And we will talk to you all later. Thank you.